Good morning.
Oh, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 6th. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, we have fellow Commissioners Phil Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and the Vice Chair, Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office this morning is Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk, Dan Nolte, and my name is Colin. From the County Board Office, we have the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, and the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
Copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.n go. Agenda and order minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 30th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, October 30th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
I'm standing.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Number two, reclaims, approval of all claims processed through November 6th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is new business, reappointment of Tara Paulson to the Lancaster County Personnel Policy Board for a five-year term commencing January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Tara Paulson to the Lancaster County Personal Policy Board. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a contract with General Reporting Service for transcription services related to a notice of appeal and a request for a bill of exceptions filed with Lancaster County Clerk's Office. This agreement is effective from the date of execution through October 23rd, 2019. There is no cause to the county.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with General Reporting Service for transcription services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three C is a statement of acceptance of possession and future responsibility by Lancaster County for equipment, supplies, and furnishings purchased by the Nebraska Supreme Court for the District 3A Probation County Reporting Center.
Move approval.
Again. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the statement of acceptance of possession and future responsibility. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D are documents concerning property generally located at 1800 Adams Street in Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, legally described in the documents related to the County of Lancaster's $480,000 principal amount series 1978 industrial development revenue bonds for the following: termination release of a lease between the County of Lancaster and BJK Industries doing business as Lincoln Electric Supply, and a quitclaim deed from the County of Lancaster to BJK Industries, Inc.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Paul Peter. I'm with the Keating O'Gara Law Firm here on behalf of the applicant, BJK Industries. This is something that probably is a little bit unusual for you, certainly is for me. We get to hearken back to a transaction that started in 1978. And we've had to do some forensic work on this. Most of the people that were involved in it back in the time are either gone or have passed away or what have you. So what we've been able to do is determine that. There was a financing done back in 1978 for a building that BJK was building on Adams Street. And that particular property was financed with IDR bonds. And the protocol done at that time, and perhaps it still is now, but was such that in order to perfect that particular bonding process, the property actually had to be conveyed to the county, and then the county leased the property back for a 20-year term. Everything went fine, as we understand copacetic. It had a 20-year term for the payment repayment on the bonds with a maturity date of 1998. At that time, NBC Bank was the trustee, and somewhere along the lines with their change and merger with Wells Fargo, frankly, we think the satisfaction of this thing just kind of fell between the cracks. And so the transfer back by the trustee, which is now Wells Fargo, just never occurred. And BJK went on with its new successor management in place, paying the property taxes. All of the statements were always sent to BJK with the understanding that, in fact, BJK owned the property. Earlier this year, we were looking at selling the property, and through a title commitment, it was discovered that indeed it still is in the name of the county. So we're coming to you as a board, asking for what we think is an administrative act. The biggest component to all of this was getting confirmation from Wells Fargo that they would, in fact, acknowledge that the full amount due under the IDR bond financing had been satisfied. And they've done that, and they have submitted a release of that particular bond obligation. So armed with that, we're now coming to you and asking that we also then take kind of the next step on the administrative process, which would be basically that the county would quitclaim the property back to us, to BJK. We've prepared the appropriate conveyance documents, and they'll also release that technical lease and terminate that lease that was on there at that time. So we're here, starting, you know, 20-plus years later, and asking for your assistance in having us get that cleaned up. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you for providing that information.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the termination and release of the lease between Lancaster County and BJK Industries. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three E is a real estate purchase agreement with CenterPoint for real estate generally located at 2202 South 11th Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, and legally described in the agreement.
Mr. Clerk, really quick, I think we had to approve those separately. Did we need to do the termination and the quitclaim deed separate?
Is this an item?
Okay. One second, Tofer.
I believe that Dan read it as a combined item, so I'm not worried about whether you separately approved each one of those.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Clerk. Apologize.
This is E, real estate purchase agreement with CenterPoint for real estate generally located at 2202 South 11th Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, and legally described in the agreement.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the real estate purchase agreement with CenterPoint. Any discussion? Mr. Tofer, Hanson, do you have anything you want to comment on?
Just here to answer questions, if you have any.
Commissioner Avery?
Is this the facility that's down across from Runza?
The facility we're currently in is across from Runza. The facility that we're talking about is across from Zesto, if we're going to use good tasting restaurants as our landmarks.
This is the sale of Traverd Hall.
I figured it was that. All right, but have you sold that property on?
That's in process. It's in negotiation.
Anything else?
Any other discussion? Commissioner Shore?
It's not surprising. I will be voting against the agreement. I have a few comments. I'll try and be brief. And as I've always said, this is not anything against CenterPoint or the services that they provide in our community or the need for their services. To me, it's the fact that we have a $1 million asset that is being directly given to a nonprofit for a price of $400,000. As a result, there is a, really, a taxpayer gift of $600,000 with no consideration being given back to the county for no guarantee of services in return. Do I have to repeat that? This $600,000 could have been used in a variety of other ways to support the building of the Emergency Operations Center, could have been used to repair a bridge, or to pave a road. If a $600,000 gift was available to assist a nonprofit in their efforts with regards to a capital campaign, a competitive process should have been used. There are a number of nonprofits in this community that could have utilized a significant amount of money to expand their facility, to serve more people. Example, St. Monica's, Houses of Hope, Matt Talbot, Cedars, Child Guidance. And on a larger scale, the $600,000 could have been used as a single direct gift to another nonprofit following a competitive process, or added to the JBC Fund to expand the efforts of a multitude of other wonderful nonprofits that are serving our community: City Mission, Child Advocacy, Friendship Home, Lighthouse, Lincoln Literacy, Voices of Hope. I push very hard, this board, to get a commitment from Cedars or from CenterPoint with regards to a number of beds or direct services available to our inmates, either being released from our county correctional facility, or our Lancaster County people who are being released from the regional center. No commitment was made or agreed to be made, and to me, that was an extreme disappointment. The bottom line is the taxpayers are suffering a loss. We had a willing buyer who was willing to spend over $900,000 for this building, and we are receiving only $400,000 in return with no consideration of additional services.
Commissioner Avery?
I am eager to support this transaction for a couple of reasons. And one is that it provides a profoundly important service to a population in this city that's underserved. Third, or second, which one am I on?
You're on two.
Two. The second, CenterPoint has an impeccable record in providing services to a population in this city that gets a little attention. I think this is a good idea. I think what we're doing is putting the board's authority to good use in order to provide for an expansion of your services, Tofer. And I don't know how we can justify the proposal that says, well, this is better because it's worth $400,000 more. And that basically says, okay, we'll sell it to a profit-making undertaking. And I was told in a lobbying session, yeah, and you're going to get this property on the tax rolls. It's never been on the tax rolls. So we're not giving anything away there. So I am, I'm really kind of concerned that we continue to kick this thing around. I thought we'd resolved it in a vote of the board weeks ago. I'm still going to vote the way I did then, and I'm going to do it with a great deal of confidence that you will do what you have promised that you would do, including, by the way, an additional $100,000 in the contract that will be transferred to the county after the closing. And so for Commissioner Shore, to continue to talk about $400,000 versus $500,000 is a little bit of an omission of important information.
Commissioner Amundson?
And I thoroughly agree with Commissioner Avery's comments. I appreciate, and I appreciate Commissioner Shore's comments. However, I think that having the impact of this particular facility is greatly assisting the mental health, the housing, and the substance abuse population in our city. CenterPoint has been nationally recognized for their work by SAMSA, and you do a tremendous job. And I think that part of the responsibility of the county is also to serve this population. And so if we have, quote-unquote, "given a gift" to you, I think that it is a very good gift because it will serve the population. That is really what, I think that we have a moral responsibility to that population within our county.
Commissioner Brinkman?
I'm supportive of the agreement. I look forward to the expansion of both physical and mental health services in this part of town. We all know that we have access issues in both of those realms. And in addition to that, I think that the improvements that will be made at the current facility and in the south of downtown area because of this agreement are going to be great for two different sectors of our community. So I appreciate your willingness. I would not describe this as a gift, but a continuation of a partnership that the county has had with CenterPoint for over 40 years. So I look forward to seeing the project move forward.
Okay, I, too, will be voting against this sale and the purchase agreement for the stated reasons I gave a couple weeks ago. But just one point is that technically, this is an indirect subsidy. This was, by definition, an indirect subsidy going to a nonprofit, a good one, one of the best in our community. Initially, the challenges I had with this agreement was that we had an alternative project that was, that would have made needed for our community, which would have been workforce housing. That was not agreed to, which I'm okay with. But during the process of negotiating the sale, there were attempts to try to put guarantees in place. I don't disagree with anything that Commissioner Brinkman, Amundson, or Avery said, but the fact that we're giving a nonprofit an indirect subsidy, and I've been very clear from the very beginning, our first meeting with Mr. Hanson, was we have unmet needs in our county. I just attended a Region 5 Governing Board meeting yesterday. So I know that there are more challenges today than there were six months ago. But I still don't have the guarantees that what this agreement will do is we'll meet those needs. And that's, I mean, I was upfront from the very beginning. I had asked for detailed information, and it's not something that the rest of the board or a majority of the board wanted in the agreement. And so while I wanted to approve this agreement, I just, unfortunately, I'm not able to do so in its current form. So with that, I...
Commissioner Avery?
Yeah, I want to make one more comment.
This would be comment four, if you're counting.
What?
You had three the first time. This would be your fourth comment. You are counting.
Thank you for counting. The thing that I think we have to keep in mind is that this proposal from CenterPoint will make a public contribution to the good of the community. What we are looking at with the proposal that Commissioner Shore supports is a private undertaking. That, yeah, they may be providing what they will not call it subsidized housing, but essentially that's what it is. And it seems to me that we have to look at the history of that property, longtime history of providing services to the community, a very important function, and where we want it to go now. I think it's important that we continue to support that institution, CenterPoint, that has made such an important contribution to our community, and will be able to even do more if this transaction is approved. That is why I'm approving, I'm voting for it. $400,000 in our budget, not a huge amount. And we are, we're making a contribution to the community that is vitally needed and will improve the quality of life for a lot of people in this community. And I'm proud to say, yes, I will vote for it.
Any other discussion? I don't know.
If I might, you know, the best dollar spent is one that's leveraged, and what I see this as an investment by the county in CenterPoint and the people that are in need of services. This allows us to get into that facility and give us more room to grow our services and do the kinds of things that are being asked of us in Lincoln and Lancaster County. And so we will be able to put our foot down in a more solid way than we have, than we're able to right now because we're frankly out of space. And we will bring 21st century healthcare to that neighborhood and to Lancaster County by integrating physical health and behavioral health and having the housing services right there so the people who are most fragile in our world have a decent place to live and have support in doing that. And I have to just point back to my 18 years as CEO of CenterPoint and the track record I've established, and I will tell you, that is what I'm doing with this project. This will be a project that in the future years, I hope that you will look back and say, I'm glad we did that. On the tax roll issues, I would say that we're going after financing that would put this facility on the tax rolls for seven years, and the facility at 13th and E would go into private ownership and be on the tax rolls. So for seven years, you'll have two properties on the tax rolls that will benefit the county. And then at the conclusion of that, if that financing package is the one that goes through with us, then that would move off the tax rolls at that point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
No.
Wilchon?
No.
Motion carries three S to no. Three F is an amendment to County Contract C-18-315 with Felsberg, Holt, and Yulvik for additional services related to the replacement of County Bridge F-88. The cost to county for the additional services is $5,500.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is the bridge located on North 14th Street. It is a larger bridge and needs a major environmental assessment to it because it's over saline wetlands that are also part of a marsh area. And so unfortunately, we've hit a few snags with the environmental permitting of this, and this is change order number one. I do expect a second change order, unfortunately, for $5,500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended contract with Felsberg, Holt, and Yulvik. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G are grant contracts funded by the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice's Community-Based Juvenile Services Aid State Grant from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 with the following: El Centro de las Americas for the Latin Leaders Program in amount of $29,036. El Centro de las Americas for the Hoven Noble program in amount of $51,260.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the two grant contracts with El Centro de las Americas. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, consent items. Amendments to the following contracts for annual requirements: asphaltic concrete. Amendments renew the contracts from November 2nd, 2018 through November 1st, 2019. The cost to county for all contracts shall not exceed $27,750, and this includes County Contract C-15-545 with Catherson Sons Construction, Inc., County Contract C-15-546 with Constructors, Inc., and County Contract C-15-544 with Pavers, Inc. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Corey and Anna Poloski, South 112th Street and Old Chaney Road in amount of $1,270. Logan M. Otto Jr., Northford Street and Bluff Road in a total amount of $741.20. And this is for two contracts. Receive and place and file the following reports: County Treasurer, 2017, distress warrants; County Sheriffs, from July through September, 2018; District Court, for October, 2018; County Assessor, registered deeds, for October, 2018; County Clerk, for October, 2018; Senate Public Hearing on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding Text Amendment 18012 and Text Amendment 18013.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, we do so at this time.
Anyone from the public here wishing to speak on an item related to county business, but not on the agenda? Seeing none. Before we get on with the announcements, just want to remind the public that today is Election Day, and I would encourage all those who are eligible to go out and exercise their constitutional right to vote. Many people have sacrificed a lot to ensure that you have that right, and so I would encourage everyone to exercise it. With that, Mr. Clerk, please proceed with the announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 8th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. 8, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next earlier meeting on Tuesday, November 13, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding the request of a gated portion of West McElvy Road. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. Going to go ahead and start the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also attended this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda under one or minutes, approve the minutes at the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 23, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry, last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 23. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number three are public hearings. The first public hearing is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and this includes St. Paul United Methodist Church, School Sisters of Christ the King, Nebraska Crop Improvement Association, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, and Trinity Lutheran Church and School.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone here wishing to testify and support any of the applications, in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Mr. Clerk, would you please see the correlating item, number four?
Number four is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next is notice of proposed change in exemption status, and this is for Community Development Agency. Do you solemnly swear from the testimony brought to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Registered Deeds. This is a property that is recently sold from one nonprofit to another nonprofit, so this is just notifying them that the existing, the previous owner, that exemption is being removed. We have received an application from the new owner, and that'll be up for your consideration in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions for Mr. Gaines? With that, I appreciate it. Going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the notice of proposed change in exemption status. Anyone here wishing to testify in support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity on this proposed change? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and, Mr. Clerk, would you please see the additional correlating item, number five?
This is action on proposed change in exemption status.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notice of proposed change in exemption status. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number six is appeal of penalty and interest on personal property from Bolts &amp; Nuts Corp.
Recommending denial of this request. We get these frequently where, due to some administrative oversight on behalf of the filer, they miss the deadline. In those cases, there's no provision to waive or reduce the penalty, so our recommendation is denial.
Based upon the recommendation of the County Assessor, a move we deny this appeal.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of the penalty and interest on the personal property from Bolts &amp; Nuts Corp. Commissioner Avery has a question?
No, I just have a comment. I believe our hands are tied by law in this particular instance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I was just showing Scott, who's Kerry Egan, Chief Administrative Officer, a trick decision where our friends in Douglas County had waived a penalty on a personal property tax filing, and they were reversed by Turk, indicating that they, their hands are tied and they have no authority to waive the penalties other than according to the law. So, you're making the right decision.
Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to County Board of Equalization business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item related to the Board of Equalization but not on the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We are adjourned. Have a good week.